Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Marsha. I also had similar questions to Councilman Garcia, so thank you so much for answering those. Honestly, I just want to applaud this program. It's such a relief and a weight off of our shoulders, I feel, to see that mental health is no longer a taboo issue and that we are actually investing in it as a city. Really happy to hear that documentation status will not affect access to care. I also have been meeting with community groups in my district, especially in South and West Phoenix, looking at Maryvale, South Phoenix, Hollison, Levine. And there is a huge need in this area. I think there's been disproportionate impact from COVID-19, so I hope that we can really prioritize these areas with the Mercy Care Program. I also want to name other communities that have been left behind. There are newly arriving refugees who have had to wait up to eight months or who have been told that they will have to wait eight months to receive care. I specifically have spoken with Afghan women who are studying at Arizona State University, who have gone through an unimaginable amount of trauma and already connected the IRC and Arizona State University to Marsha. I just want to give her a huge shout out in this space to thank her for already working towards giving them services as well. You know, I think supporting our current residents, as well as our new residents, is extremely important. So, thank you so much. Please, if we can be helpful in any way, let us know. But I hope that this is the start of significant investments from the city in mental health care. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor?
Good afternoon. Thank you to everybody. Tad, you can smile a little bit, relax. We're not that scary. You looked very nervous from when I spoke to you yesterday, so I just wanted to give you some support. One of my questions, or what I would like, I would like to review the initial list of the data elements and review them and see if they align with a lot of us on council or if there's some additional data points that need to be added. Secondly, after our conversation yesterday, I was thinking about it and I wanted to know if there were going to be any navigators on the light rail platform and on canal, so that we're touching everybody on different access points or on transportation arenas or areas.
Mayor Gallego and Vice Mayor Pastor, the intention of the mental health program is to ensure that we are meeting all of the hotspots, if you will, in our community. We do know that along our canals and the other places that you referenced, that there is a need. So, our navigation services, in terms of the outreach that would occur to educate and inform and get individuals into the services, would include those areas. Additionally, we will be ensuring that we work very closely with other outreach providers directly involved in the services that we provide to those experiencing homelessness. For example, Community Bridges, Inc., so that they now have an additional tool in the tool belt, if you will, to use a term by one of our colleagues here, in terms of the services that are available and they are out there doing outreach and engagement. We also will be ensuring, as it relates to outreach and navigation, that as other city departments are encountering individuals in the course of what they are doing along the canals and other areas who may be experiencing homelessness, know that there is an outreach via Mercy Care in this contract to get those individuals connected with services.
Thank you. What about the light rail? Because I don't know if, I know City Manager Barton is there. There were several years ago, I want to say five or six years, that we put money into the budget for navigation on the light rail and to work with the population on the light rail platform and trying to connect them to services. So, I'm assuming that that funding is still there. And I want to, I guess where I'm going in the bigger picture is, how will this then interact with other programs that are currently exist? And how is that interaction going to happen? In particular, I remembered this morning the light rail piece, there's the canal piece, and so.
I mean, it sounds like if this is Agenda Item 61, it's the COVID-19 Behavior or Health and Support Services Agreement. I imagine this is money that folks got in because of COVID-19 federal funding. Right? It's like one of those things where it's a pandemic, a global crisis, to finally get these resources that folks have been asking for for a minute.
... opportunity for those outreach teams that are assigned to the light rail to leverage the ARPA Mental Health Program that we have available. That currently is CBI, who provides that outreach.
It's like we have all of this money tied up in the police. We just defunded the police and reallocated those funds.
And the ARPA Mental Health Program. So, those outreach teams that are already working along the light rail will know that they have a direct connection to the ARPA Mental Health funding and resources via this particular program we're talking about right now.
Thank you. And I know I said light rail, but I guess what I want to say is the transportation connectivity, which could also mean our bus stops at certain points. So, I'm just thinking holistically, so you know what I'm thinking about. Thank you. Really appreciate all of our work.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. And I think your last comment on the entire transit system does make a lot of sense. Director Franklin and I have been talking about the need for this type of outreach around the bus system as well. So, it would be great to have an additional resource. Thank you so much to everyone who's worked to bring this item forward. We are hearing a lot from our community about this need. This is on top of our $15 million Community Assistance Program. The CAP program is an ongoing program, which will help deploy clinicians and people with expertise in behavioral health. This is funded with one-time federal funds. And so, hopefully, we'll get a big impact on some real challenges in our community. From my perspective, the more we can target these resources towards people who are unsheltered or who are at risk of being unsheltered, that is a real priority for us and money particularly well targeted. We want to make sure people have the tools they need to be in a safe, sustainable housing environment and address any challenges, particularly those on the behavioral health side, to that. I also appreciate that this does include financial assistance for those who have not been able to enroll in other programs. In the briefing materials we received, it did mention that we'll help people with their transportation solutions and mentioned some national transportation companies by name. Councilwoman Ansari's comment reminded me that we do have people with a wide variety of language challenges and we have transportation providers, for example, are most familiar with our Somali community or local companies who have a lot of assets. Would those local companies also be eligible to participate in this program?
Absolutely, Mayor. Through this work, we recognize too that having an awareness of some of the unique needs of the community expand to various different groups. And with that, we need to have other partners brought to the table. And so, that absolutely would be the case in addressing those needs.
Wonderful news. And then a question for Director Franklin. We've been talking about in this item, the city has great partnerships with several other entities, CBI. We have the CAP program. How will we coordinate all of these efforts to make sure that we are not duplicating, but enhancing?
Mayor Gallego, we are going, well, let me first start by stating that Mercy Care already works very closely with our public safety, our fire department, our police department, and in particular with DC Ernst and her team around the Community Assistance Program, as well as a formal program that we had under DC. So, there's already the connection there.
Joe, do you want to repeat what you just said earlier?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was just saying, you know, if this is Item 61, it's the COVID-19 Behavior or Health and Support Services. And so, for those of you who've been kind of tracking some of this stuff, right? A lot of cities received a bunch of money from the federal government in response to COVID. I forget what Trump's administration was, but you heard ARPA. That is what the current administration is calling its funding in terms of like trying to respond to COVID. And so, a bunch of cities got a bunch of money to figure out, right? Like how to address what was coming up, one of them doing mental health, which again, folks have been saying for years, not a new conversation. But all of a sudden, we were able to get new money in response to the global pandemic. And so, they've been putting it into all these various behavior or health programs, where the city gets to partner with various health clinics to address the needs. The problem that I don't hear anyone talking about, that you just heard Michelle actually allude to, is that so many of the federal dollars that opened up for cities to start to experiment with how to address the mental health issue, almost all of them always included some extra funding for the police as an agency to help like connect those dots. And never once did any of these council members discuss the implications of putting a violent, a known violent agency, one of the deadliest police forces in the country, right? What does it mean to put them in initial contact with folks who have behavioral health issues? Never has that been addressed, never has there been any kind of conversation about, you know, whether or not we would even allocate those funds to folks who have that kind of history, especially with folks who have behavioral health issues. And so, it's interesting, but that's part of what they're talking about in this Agenda Item. It's like every single time, how much funding goes to the police to do a job? But they are just woefully unequipped to do. And how better could we spend that money in other places? Even on many levels, from partnerships and construction to anything else.
But even on this one here, individually, I think this has a lot of legs on it. And I'm real excited about it. And I don't generally say those things, but I do want to thank Councilmember Garcia, the others that have worked on this, Marsha, your entire team, Mayor, everybody else that put this thing together. You have a lot to be thankful for. You picked a team that knows what they're doing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any additional comments? And I'll add, this calls on so many of the partners who have helped us get through very difficult times, including our federally qualified health centers who helped us with COVID. So, thank you to all for stepping up yet again for our city. Roll call.
Sorry?
Yes?
DeCiccio?
Yeah. Anyone else here how a change of tone DeCiccio has right now? I wonder why?
O'Brien?
The most gracious I've heard him ever be on council.
Stark? Waring?
Yes.
Pastor? Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Woo-hoo!
Next, we turn to Item 63, which is related to our South Mountain Technology Corridor and a development agreement with Skanel Properties. This is in Council District 7. I will turn to Councilwoman Ansari.
This is on that 51st Avenue. Mayor, this is a very exciting day for Levine and Astrea and residents who have long anticipated a quality developer to take the first step in executing the vision for the South Mountain Technology Corridor. I personally am deeply invested in making sure that this project sets the stage for what's to come in Levine. I want to specifically thank the developer, Chris Mackey, planning, Alan Stevenson, everyone who's been involved, the mayor, Councilman Garcia, everyone who's been part of this, especially for the willingness of the developer to agree to a three-year moratorium on any distribution buildings as part of their project, so that we actually have the time to attract high-wage tech and manufacturing jobs, which is a core part and the vision for the South Mountain Technology Corridor. So, with that, I move to approve Item 63 with the following stipulation. For the term of this agreement, any buildings that are constructed or tenants who have distribution as its primary use, as defined in Ordinance G-6905, will not be included in the reimbursement calculation for public infrastructure. Further, for the term of this agreement, if a building is included in the reimbursement calculation and later houses a tenant with distribution as a primary use, the funds already reimbursed to the developer shall be withheld from subsequent reimbursements.
Second.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilwoman Ansari, for your work on this corridor and in particularly for that motion. We'll ensure we are pursuing the type of high-wage employment that our residents have told us they would like to see in the South Mountain Tech Corridor. So, really appreciate your motion. Additional comments? Roll call.
Sorry?
Yes?
Ronnie, you are absolutely right about what's happening here, being a major part of how gentrification will work and who will get displaced. Right? And as you can tell, no conversation about what that means. And Ronnie, if you want to come off and just say a little bit about how you understand that tech corridor? Because again, that's on 51st Avenue and Bayline, where the new 202 extension went, which again, had a huge fight with the local indigenous population there, especially around the sacred mountain, the South Mountain, and what it took, right? But it's like with the freeway extension and now like a promise of high-wage jobs within tech, that whole area is meant to be completely developed. And so, Ronnie, do you want to come off and talk a little bit about that? You can.
Ronnie, you're on mute if you're talking.
No worries. Ronnie wrote in there, now they will build housing for that market, which again, is the high-end housing, right? Specifically for folks who are oftentimes relocating here. It's an interesting conversation. And what it sounds like, again, I haven't looked too deeply into this, but it sounds like they're voting on, again, some of the kickbacks that you'll get to incentivize the development in this area, which it sounds like, again, it's for like tech, high-tech corridor, whatever that means and whoever that's for. But clearly, no interrogation about the actual impact of these things. And again, if you look at almost any other city who has done a similar thing for a tech corridor, there has always been major impact on the local population that has always been resulted in exclusion, exclusion from housing, exclusion from the inner city, right? Continued gentrification and displacement of largely people of color to the outskirts, right? Poor people. And there's no interrogation of that. And we see that with this, in terms of how we develop. But again, we see that in how folks, how this council approaches public safety as well, right? Very surface and never any actual interrogation of the impact and the harm of these types of things. Need to pick up our people over property conversations with this council. You want to listen in again?
Wonderful. Thank you. We do have many members of the public to comment on this item. We'll begin with Vesta de Carlo, followed by Anisia Groves.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Sorry, I'm having an echo.
Okay, so I am just really curious. I have no idea what in the world you're all thinking. This notice of claim regarding Sal DeCiccio reveal text messages providing Sal DeCiccio, Police Chief Jerry Williams, President of Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, Plea Brit London, County Attorney Alistair Adele, and Tam and Tom Van Dorn, First Responders Bureau Liaison Supervisor, were all scheming, colluding to silence and imprison demonstrators for exercising their First Amendment rights. And none of you, not one of you, condemned Sal or PPV.
Excuse me. The item that is before the council on this particular moment is Item 65, which is a grant for the fire department from the federal government to pay for self-contained breathing apparatus. If your comments are relative to that, please speak to those. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate our city manager clarifying the agenda item. So, again, we will have general public comment at the end, but for this agenda item, the comments are about whether the fire department should be able to receive the safety equipment. Okay, so we'll go to Ms. Groves, followed by Bridget Hart.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. You've ignored us and refused to speak against Sal's behavior or censured his racist and abusive attacks against your constituents in the movement.
And again, do you have comments on this agenda item?
Watched him verbally attack us during council.
Hart, do you have comments on the fire department?
Mayor Kate, City Councilmembers, you enable Sal's egregious misconduct.
Laura Hudson, do you have comments on safety equipment for the fire department, followed by Marissa Leva?
Sal, an elected official was lobbying and using his influence.
Marissa, do you have comments on the fire department?
Yes, so I signed up today to speak on this item about the breathing apparatuses for the fire department because there's no agenda item to talk about Sal and how he's been texting the.
Oh, my God, this is too funny.
And again, any member of the public may speak on the public comment item. Ian, do you have any comments on whether we should provide safety equipment for firefighters?
Yes, hi, thank you. I think it's very interesting that council members are laughing about how many people think that it's important that we talk about Sal DeCiccio. So, I really would like.
April McQ will be next, followed by Helen. April, do you have any comments on safety equipment for the fire department?
Hi, Mayor and Council. I did want to express my opposition to Item 65 because Sal DeCiccio abused his power to help MCAO.
Helen, followed by Jacob.
In solidarity with Black leadership and in light of news, Sal, Jerry, Plea, and MCAO have attempted to refile false charges and make an example out of the protesters and.
Jacob, followed by Brandon. Mayor, Jacob is not on the line. All right. Do we have any additional speakers for this agenda item?
Can you hear me?
On the line, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Brandon, please go ahead.
Yeah, on this Agenda Item 65, I don't think the fire department should receive US federal funding since nearly all of the city's funding goes to the Phoenix Police Department, who worked with Sal DeCiccio against and Alistair Adele, County Attorney.
Staff, do we have any additional speakers on 65?
I would like to speak.
Veronica is on the line.
Oh, thank you. Veronica, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I do not support funding for safety equipment until we are able to talk about Sal's abuse of power. What was that evil villain laugh just now?
And then our final speaker on this item will be Patricia.
I would like to speak as well. Hi there. Thank you, Mayor Kate. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes. What a disruption today. I do fully support the Phoenix Fire Department receiving funds for their breathing apparatus. We know that the fire department actually helps people and they should get the funding that they need to do that. I am concerned, though, that this is a public safety section and council is sitting there ignoring the fact that Sal DeCiccio is colluding to file false charges against protesters.
Thank you. We'll turn now to council members.
I would like to speak. My name's Valerie Hernandez.
Do we have any council questions? Councilmember Garcia?
I support Item 65. I think our fire department needs to have the necessary equipment to do their job. But I do want to acknowledge the frustration of folks who are calling for this item. And want to stress that this wouldn't be an issue if, at our Public Safety and Justice Subcommittee, we were discussing the multiple investigations into the police department or addressing the collusion to deny our constituent their rights. I do think these are serious issues and I hope that our Public Justice and Safety Subcommittee actually starts taking some of these on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
I would like to speak.
I'm sorry?
Yes?
DeCiccio?
Yeah, of course.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado? O'Brien? I apologize. I didn't hear that. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you. Stark? Waring?
Yes.
Pastor?
I support Councilman Garcia's request.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We next move to Item 74. Which is a Building and American Infrastructure and Sustainability and Equity Raise Grant. This is a project taking place in District.
Mayor, continuing on the theme of good news from some of the items today, want to echo my excitement for this item. It was about a month ago that Keny and Mario joined my team and I for our District 7 Infrastructure Tour to spotlight how the Rios Alado revitalization could be fast-tracked things to federal funding. So, this specific raise grant was an immediate action step that they actually shared with community members, such as the South Central Collaborative, leadership from the Autobahn Center and residents who joined us to reimagine this area. And now it is here. Very exciting. This has the potential to be a $35 to $40 million investment in health and connectivity, where the city will only be responsible for 30% of the fund.
So, Patricia, anything to say, since they moved on?
This is Lola Kenchman. I just do not get it. These people have the caucacity to laugh at us? Like, did Kate laugh? Is that, did I just make that up? Did I hear that? Did anybody else hear that? Is it just me?
She did. You didn't make it up.
And they thought it was funny, that, you know, but I did notice one thing. I don't know if anybody else noticed it, but Sal definitely sounded shook. And all the cameras went off. All of them went off. And finally, did we finally hear from Carlos Garcia in solidarity without prompting? Did we hear that? Did I hear that, Ronnie?
Finally finding his words, you know, and, you know, Laura said, I agree.
Oh, my God. Was it Laura? I thought it was Yasmin. Of course, it wasn't Yasmin. She's useless. I am so shocked that these people thought this was funny, couldn't find its way onto the agenda. They're going to have a funky good time hearing about the citizens petition. I cannot wait. Joe, do you have anything else you want to weigh in on with this?
No, just that Sal seems noticeably more quiet, right? Lot less colorful Sal than what we're norm, than what we're used to, right? Like the abusive language, the kind of bombastic response. He definitely seems to have been taken down a few pegs and seems to be a lot more mindful, a lot more thoughtful about what he's going to say, which is a much welcome shift, because again, right? The heat is on and eyes are watching and we are not going to stop until there's some accountability. And I think he's feeling that pressure and I'm glad. And it's clear that they all are. It's clear that they all are. Now, we've got to get, you know, our so-called allies to really find their language and their footing, so that way they can show up in the way that we need them to show up on that diet. Patricia, I know you made your comment. How are you feeling? And you were on mute a little earlier, so I don't know if you got to click that unmute button.
I think Patricia's having audio issues.
When she, when you go to like the WebEx and then you come back, sometimes your computer doesn't really recoup. Patricia, you might want to log on, log off and log back on if you can. I'm not sure. I do want to say that for the folks who's really stood through this, like, you know, I know we've been coming at this for, it's so long now. It's not even funny. I know we've been coming at this for years. funny. I know we've been coming at this for years and this has just been, we get silenced on the right and left and, and it really, really feels like disrespect and it was disrespectful. But I hope you could feel your voices and the power of what you were saying and how much it shook Sal. He doesn't have his stupid names to call us now. Like, he's not going to call us anything now. He's going to go hide with his tail between his legs and hope to God that they don't indict him on something criminal. And that's really where he's at. Like, the system that he thought he was protecting is going to come for him and then we're just going to watch and eat popcorn because, you know, if the system comes for and kills and cages black people, we're not yanking you out, Sal. So we'll just see what happens when your little homeboys and all your friends at Plea leave you out and hang you out to drive because that's what they do. This whole system uses you. But anyway, I wanted to just thank those folks who get on, get cut off, get ignored. It feels like crap. I just, yeah. I also want to also invite Valerie because you said you wanted to speak. They cut you off. Would you like, because we have an audience going right now and this is where the narrative really lives. Do you, Valerie, want to read your message into the space so that the folks on Facebook and as we archive this, and you know, by the way, the city and all their, their scaredy cat ways, also watch this too. So your comment will get heard. You're welcome to do it. And if not, that's no problem at all. But just want to give you the platform that you deserve as someone who really is a concerned member of our community. Yes, so I was going to say, good afternoon, City Council. In order to really get through to people, I would like to follow the right speech that is spoken about in the Eightfold Path of Buddha's teachings. But what I was going to say is, my name is Valeria Hernandez. I am Mexican, non-binary, and a Phoenix native. I was born and raised in Phoenix. However, I currently live in the twenty-sixth Legislative District. I, today I am here to represent the Theravada, Theravada Buddhism tradition. I am a Buddhist non-in training assistant and student under the Honorable Venerable Tridao. Venerable Tridao is a Buddhist monk of the Theravada tradition. He is, he was ordained in Florida. He currently is in Florida. That's where he resides, has been a Buddhist monk for six years, spent three hundred and sixty-five days in silence and doing Vipana meditation and is well-known for his presence on TikTok. He has one million followers where he is educating an audience on Buddhism, meditation, and mindfulness. With that being said, the message I would like to leave with you here today is that your actions have consequences, even your inaction. The Buddha says silence has many answers and your silence while Phoenix PD is killing black and brown people, harassing our unhoused population, and many other acts of violence is deafening. You have two options. You can either continue to be silent and suffer the consequences while your community suffers as well and continues to be angry at you for good reason. Or you can do what's right, hold Phoenix PD accountable, defund them as much as possible, delegate money to the communities that need it most and to create a safer world. Buddha spoke of peace and compassion. My teacher of ten years, That Nhat Hanh, who just recently passed away, was a Vietnamese Zen Buddhist monk. He was exiled from Vietnam for being against the Vietnam War. He stood by Martin Luther King Jr. through the Civil Rights Movement and he was a Buddhist monk without borders and Venerable Tridao, as well as myself, do not and will not back down from social injustices as well as racial injustices. Although Buddhism is seen as a peaceful way of life in either religion, Buddha talked about not causing harm. It is the first commitment to Buddhism. And so what the city council is doing right now is they are orchestrating their own karma, just like Alistair Adele did. She knew she was having substance abuse issues. I understand that. I, I understand those things happen. But what's not acceptable as a person in power, as a position of power, is to show up to your job where you're going to make important decisions intoxicated. That is unacceptable and I'm glad that she resigned. I sent loving kindness to her days ago to resign because if they do not do anything, they are the ones who are going to truly suffer. They're orchestrating their karma and their rebirth is not going to be pleasant. And that's what I have to say today.
Thank you for that, Valerie. Thank you for being here and sharing. We are on item zero, zero, zero now, folks, so we can listen in to the council floor.
You can all go back to business as usual, being complicit with Sal's egregious misconduct and continuing to support state-sanctioned anti-black police violence by utterly refusing to hold anyone accountable for it. But it does resignation was just the beginning and we are not going away. So I'll just repeat the demands. Fire Chief Williams, Sergeant McBride, and all officers who played a role in fabricating and approving gang charges against protesters. Disband Phoenix Law Enforcement Association and pay reparations to every person politically targeted by Phoenix Police. And last but not least, which I'm sure you're going to hear more about, you need to hold Sal accountable.
Thank you. Bridgette is next, followed by Laura Hudson.
And Council, thank you very much. Mayor Kate and Council, this is a national case and you've said nothing. You oversee the deadliest police department in the nation. And after seeing corrupt Sal in the news and your silence, I am appalled. I am appalled and devastated by your apathy and your disregard for true public safety or justice. You support and you promote further violence from PPD by funding them and refusing to use your power to hold them accountable. We have to create citizens petitions to literally force you to focus on what is actually important to the people who need protection from your violent killer cops. I have lived in this state for over fifteen years and I provided services to people with developmental disabilities and serious mental illness as well. I ended up in a position where I had to teach my staff not to call nine-one-one because it was so deadly and damaging to their life, their well-being, their ongoing care if they had any interaction with Phoenix Police Officers. It is egregious. Again, I repeat that you have not addressed this issue publicly quickly. Sal DeCiccio, you should be ashamed of yourself. I, I feel that. And we are coming for you all. I'm done.
Laura is next, followed by Ben.
Sal DeCiccio, an elected official, was lobbying on behalf of Plea to the MCAO, a supposedly impartial independent agency, in order to silence and cage police critics and critics of himself. Everyone involved knew those charges were false, yet DeCiccio used his influence to push the county attorney to continue violating people's rights by refiling false charges. The evidence is overwhelming and not a single one of you all have condemned Sal's misconduct. Why is that? Did you all also want to squelch the movement against Phoenix Police violence? If you disagree with his actions, we need to hear from you. You cannot even begin to distance yourself from Sal's appalling actions if you are not willing to publicly condemn them. And if you really want to prove you disapprove of misconduct, you will meet the demands from last August. Fire Chief Williams, Sergeant McBride, and all the officers who played a role in fabricating and approving gang charges against protesters. Disband Phoenix Police Law Enforcement Association. They're toxic. They're dangerous. And pay reparations to every person politically targeted by the Phoenix Police. You all need to make it right. It's your, it's your job. You need to do your job. I'm done.
Ben is next, followed by Marissa.
Hi, just a second, let me see if you can hear me.
Yes.
Also signed up to comment on sixty-five and y'all didn't get a comment, so a little disappointed about that. I am here also to talk about the wild amount of corruption and mismanagement in our public safety department writ large. I'm also just really frustrated with how impossible it is to get in touch with councils to even tell you how I'm feeling about these things. You turn it off in WebEx meetings. I mean, y'all could turn that back on. That'd be fine. That'd be a good way to get feedback from folks. Called them to the office. Y'all, y'all aren't responding to stuff like that. I mean, you're just really trying hard not to listen to us when we show up and tell you exactly what's wrong and exactly what needs to be done about it. So we have the most violent police force in the nation again. And we're finding out at the same time that the chief of police is saluting with a city council member who is in charge of the Public Safety Subcommittee. Is the only person who can add agenda items to the public city Subcommittee to politically protect, politically guard people who disagree with them. I mean, this is, this is fascism. This isn't democracy. And all you do is just smile and pat yourselves on the back about some, some federal grants you're, you're dispersing while hiding behind having your cameras off. Stated COVID protocols that make sure that you have so fear of input from the community. I mean, there would be hundreds of people here if y'all really wanted to hear from us, but y'all don't. So we come back again and again and again to tell you the exact same thing. We told you Sal was corrupt then. We told you what was going on then. Now it's obvious to everyone, not just here, but nationwide. Based in part by stuff that is recorded in open meeting, you idiot. I mean, come on, it's all happening right here. And what we've got going on is evidence made public by reputable local news, things available through open meeting laws and recorded in a chamber. It is clear that collusion and conspiracy against voters and residents of Phoenix has been occurring between the city, members of the council, the county prosecutor's office, and the police union fleet. We spend a billion dollars a year on public safety because of this corruption. Not counting countless lawsuits that we are going to have to pay for out of taxpayer money because the people that you think keep us safe do nothing but harm us. A billion dollars a year. So pursuant to Chapter Four, Section Twenty-two of the Phoenix City Charter, I, Ben Reilly, a citizen and resident of Phoenix.
Marissa is next, followed by Lashay.
Hi, first off, how dare you. To go on with business as usual while the city of Phoenix is engulfed in probably the largest political corruption scandal in recent history is appalling. My name's Marissa Leva. I'm one of the fifteen people charged as a fictitious gang member. But what many of you may not know is that I was actually born in District Six with Sal DeCiccio as my council member. I grew up, graduated from Desert Vista High School, and came of legal voting age in District Six as Sal's constituent. And I knew him as the vocally oppositional to the status quo, resentless council member about issues facing his community. But when I stood up against the violent and racist police force directly harming my community, Sal responded by personally trying to put me behind bars for the remainder of my life where I likely would have died incarcerated. And unfortunately, I've come to know Sal well because he's made sure of that by calling me a whack job, not based in reality, on a public city council meeting and featuring me on his pathetically juvenile mean tweet Tuesday. But now that it's gone well past bulliard taunts, it's irresponsible. Not a single one of you has addressed it, seeing as you, you were all made aware of a seventy-seven million dollar notice of claim against all of you over a week ago. The only statement that came from council after this news was Sal's delusional, inaccurate, and unhinged response about prosecuting those who destroyed our city. And the statement is not only verifiably false, but it demonstrates the kind of dangerous targeted harassment that Sal deals best in, which has in the past led to my inboxes being flooded with death threats and my family's home targeted. Like, this isn't a joke. It's not a game. This is an elected official enthusiastically abusing the powers of his position to harass and aid in the prosecution of his political opponents. And you are all complicit in allowing him to do so. I'm more than happy to tell all of you where to shove your statements of deep regret. So it's time to start actually listening to us. Act or the community will act for you. And Sal, you may think that you're on a one-man crusade to uncover waste in the city of Phoenix, but you already accomplished that. It's you, Sal. You're a complete waste of human life and you should resign in absolute shame.
Lashay is next, followed by Ian.
Lashay, are you on the line? You may proceed.
We'll go next to Ian, followed by April.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. My name is Ian Lopiccolo. I'm a resident of South Phoenix and specifically District Eight. I hope y'all can understand why we had to disrupt the city council meeting today to talk about what we needed to talk about. It really is quite surprising as a member of, a resident of Phoenix to know that it is so hard to get city council to talk about the issue that so many people in Phoenix want to hear from council about. It is really disgusting to me that there has been a lack of public statements or comments by any council members or the mayor around the scandal surrounding the known false gang charges brought by the Maricopa County Attorney's Office and in collusion with the Phoenix Police Department, Lee, and now that we know a city council member, Sal DeCiccio, as well, in not taking action or addressing any of these crimes, the council and the mayor's office have become complicit in them. And it is really hard to trust in my government or to celebrate in the wins that you guys are celebrating when I know that my friends, my family, the people around me are being persecuted by you and that you can still laugh about it while we're trying to present and bring up those issues. It's also come to my attention that many council members don't even know about these issues or aren't staying on, up to date on them about all of the like emerging evidence coming out. And so I challenge all of you to use your offices and the power that you have to research these issues and stay on top of them so that when we come and bring these issues to you, they aren't a surprise and you don't like not know about them. It's really disgusting that you can be a sitting council member and not know that the people sitting around the table with you have been implicated and their text messages have been come out to say that they were also trying to falsely charge protesters with charges that they knew were false, to say that an umbrella or manicured nails are somehow weapons to be used against the, one of the most armed police forces in the nation and one that gets seventy-five percent of the total overall budget that my taxes and the taxes of the people around me provide to the city. Seventy-five percent of the overall budget and you guys are not worried about the fact that known false charges were brought. And then when they were taken away with prejudice that they somehow were still, people were communicating and texting to bring them back and joke about the fact that like, hey, let's bring those back and try to suppress people's First Amendment's rights even further because we don't like that they have to talk about the Phoenix Police Department. The Phoenix Police Department is deadly and it really hurts people. And so I challenge y'all to acknowledge that the system was designed to allow you to not have to know about these issues, to allow you to continue your regular council meeting without thinking about these issues or addressing them. And I challenge you to think beyond the scope and the rules and the regulations that your offices make you think about a lot. Go beyond those and think about what you can actually do with the power that you have as sitting council members and as the mayor to address these issues that have caused so much harm in my community. Thank you.
April is next, followed by Helen.
Hi, everyone. April McHugh, District Six in North Phoenix. Sal DeCiccio abused his power to help Maricopa County Attorney's Office target and falsely charge people who speak out against police violence. Sal, an elected official, was lobbying on behalf of Plea to MCAO and which is supposedly an impartial independent agency in order to silence and cage police critics. Everyone involved knew those charges were false, yet DeCiccio used his influence to push the county attorney to continue violating people's rights by re-filing these false charges. The DOJ is doing a fake investigation and somehow hasn't even looked at the MCAO yet. Police Department is being investigated for what was this, for cheating and lying, yet Mayor and Council think all is well and have nothing to say. Your audacity to show up and carry on a council meeting as if you are totally complicit in perpetuating. in perpetuating all these atrocities, this is the epitome of this system. This system was designed to work like this, so we will continue to work to get you all out of office and build a whole new system. You must speak out and demand DeCiccio never have decision-making power ever again. And also pay reparations to everyone who's been falsely charged. Come on already, do something. Thank you.
Helen is next, followed by Patricia.
Hi, council. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, hi, council. I heard you hear Sal giggling and laughing. Did he really come up here and talk about racial disparities and discrimination in real estate? What about the racial discrimination happening in our courtrooms? Not only has our community endured the wrath of political prosecutions, but our community has also had to endure verbal abuse and the dismissal at the hands of Councilman Sal DeCiccio, who has also been lobbying on behalf of PLE to MCAO, a supposedly impartial independent agency in order to silence and cage police critics. That's disturbing to hear him giggling and laughing like that. But you know what? In solidarity with black leadership and in light of news, Sal, Jerry, PLE, and the MCAO, you all have tried to refile false charges and make an example out of protesters in hopes of silencing and deterring our A1, our 1A rights. And I'm restating these demands from August of last year, y'all. August of last year. The first one is still to fire Chief Jerry Williams, Sergeant McBride, and all the officers that played a role in fabricating and approving gang charges against protesters. And number two, to disband the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. Number three, pay reparations to every person politically targeted by Phoenix Police. Y'all need to reenact a resolution to create definitive policy changes that prevent this level of collusion and conspiracy. No more direct communication with MCAO regarding specific cases unless it's to advance. I yield the rest of my time.
Patricia is next, followed by Brandon.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So I am also here in support of the black abolitionist leadership that is calling for city council to acknowledge and do something about Councilman Sal's collusion to refile false charges to imprison protesters against police violence. I'm also reading a citizen's petition for Matthew Aguilar, who is currently ill and couldn't be here to do it. Pursuant to chapter five of section 22 of the Phoenix City Charter, Matthew Aguilar enacts a resolution to produce all documents related to Phoenix Police Department's response to protest, citizen and, oh, excuse me. Matthew Aguilar's comments are as such. One, to enact a resolution to disband PLE. Two, to enact a resolution to demand public negotiations for any and all Phoenix Police Department's MOU negotiations. Three, that city council enacts a resolution to make amends with the victims. The city of Phoenix must pay reparations to all victims of Phoenix Police Department's attempt to file known false gang charges on protesters. And last, the final enactment for Phoenix City Council. City Council must enact a resolution to produce all documents related to Phoenix Police Department's response to the protests in 2020 and Phoenix Police Department's attempts to politically prosecute protesters in collusion with the Maricopa County Attorney's Office so that we can finally understand what took place and what was involved. This includes all of Councilman Sal DeCiccio's emails and text messages to anyone in PLE, all of Councilman DeCiccio's emails and text messages to Phoenix Police Department employee from May 2020 to present, any emails that Sal sent to any Maricopa County Attorney employee from May 2020 to present, all of Chief Williams and Assistant Chief Curtain Box's emails and text messages regarding the protests in 2020 and to the present date. We want Commander Lawrence Hines, John Collins, Gabriel Lopez's emails, and any text messages regarding protests in 2020 to present, including all of Sergeant Doug McBride's emails and text messages regarding the protests. Lieutenant Ben Moore's email and text messages from 2020 until the present, and any text messages and emails from any Phoenix police officer who was placed on administrative leave related to the protests in 2020. Finally, all of the text messages from any and all Phoenix police officers currently being criminally investigated by the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office for their misconduct related to the protests. And any presentations that Phoenix Police Department made to this council regarding the 2020 protests. We want the 21th Century Blue Report and the ASU Report. Thank you very much for giving us all materials that the Department of Justice was provided as well.
Brandon is next, followed by Veronica.
Hey, hey there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, my name's Verona Valentine, one of the 39 people who was politically charged with crimes and never committed. I'm embarrassed to be represented by such a callous and ineffective group of elected officials. The collective power of this community took down a tyrannical county attorney who's held reign over the third-largest prosecutorial agency in the United States. And if you think for one second this community can't tear you out of your cute little city council seats, you might want to rethink that. D6 Rep. Sal DeCiccio has had a direct hand in the political charging of protesters. He's equally as responsible for those 180 dropped cases because his focus was prosecuting political oppositions and putting innocent people in prison for decades instead of prosecuting potential actual criminals whose victims may be some of your constituents. Mayor Kate Gallego, I've heard you've been recently nominated for a mayoral award. Uh, let me start by saying that even calling you a mayor is a long shot at best. An investigation paid for by taxpayers confirmed the misconduct we've been saying since the summer of 2020, and you're okay knowing there's misconduct, giving your constituents money to those who are still actively involved in this? The DOJ is actively investigating the Phoenix Police Department, being literal neo-Nazis, and you've done nothing, nothing to even say? Are you serious? What kind of elected official are you? What this conglomerate of corrupt public officials has done to its own citizens is insidious. All of, all of you on this council are spineless human beings who should never hold a position that's responsible for holding anyone accountable. None of you would even know accountability if the definition was screened via projector on the side of City Hall. You're all enough to do the job you're elected to do. All of you need to step down immediately. Otherwise, this resilient and relentless community is coming for your jobs. And you might want to ask Alistair Adele how that went for her. You all have a long rope to hang yourselves with? Don't make it any longer. Disrespectfully, thanks.
Veronica is next, followed by Chelsea.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Mayor Kate, city council members, you enabled Sal's misconduct. You've ignored your constituents and refused to speak against his behavior or censure his racist and abusive attacks against your constituents in the movement to hold police accountable. You watched him verbally attack us during city council meetings since 2017, as he called us liars and lunatics for speaking about the very harms ABC 15 News has proven. You should be ashamed. Your silence makes you complicit with his abusive power. Mayor Kate and council, this is a national case and you've said nothing. We cannot trust that, that, that the DOJ, AKA other cops, will hold these Phoenix cops accountable. This is the same Department of Justice that found Breonna Taylor's killers justified in their use of force. It is you who are elected to represent us and keep us safe in Phoenix. We are your constituents, speaking to you today from your varying districts, asking for you to listen to us, to see that the same police who are supposed to protect and serve here in the valley are the same ones who target, kill, and cage our neighbors. Mayor Kate, I am also a big fan of using the tools at my disposal, but as your constituent, I do not feel like I have any tools in my toolbox right now. Since you will not listen and you pretend not to see, what are we to do? I do not feel represented by anyone currently in office. I live in District Four and my council representative told community organizers those corrupt charges would never be dropped. That corrupt county attorney, Alistair Adele, would never be removed from office in a state like Arizona. Corrupt officials who ignore injustices will be removed from office. City Council, my public servants, will you help hold your people accountable? I yield the rest of my time.
Chelsea is next, followed by Vanessa.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So there's a lot to talk about today. We could talk about Sal, our corrupt council member. We could talk about Jerry Williams, our corrupt police chief. We could talk about the collusion between the two of them and PLE and the MCAO. But I want to take a moment to focus on our mayor, who has done absolutely nothing to hold these individuals and offices accountable. Instead, she's running ad campaigns on social media, asking that we vote for her for an award she's been nominated for. This is her priority at a time when her city is in crisis, when the DOJ is actively investigating her police department, which is the most deadly in the nation. Mayor Kate, your focus on shameless self-promotion when so many important issues need your attention is tacky and insensitive. Mass Liberation has been using social media to agitate for real change, holding Alistair Adele accountable when you refused and even told us, while calling us names, Sal, uh, that it couldn't be done. I suggest you, Mayor Kate, shift your priorities and do the job you were elected to do. With that being said, pursuant to chapter four, section 22 of the Phoenix City Charter, I, Chelsea Hickok, a citizen and resident of the city of Phoenix, hereby petition the city council to do the following. Enact a resolution calling on Phoenix City Council to hold Sal DeCiccio accountable for his unethical and abusive conduct at Phoenix City Council meetings and enact a resolution to investigate and remove Sal DeCiccio from his seat on council. Thank you. I yield my time.
Vanessa is next, followed by Andrew.
I'm reading a citizen's petition in solidarity with black leadership. Pursuant to chapter four, section 22 of the Phoenix City Charter, I, Vanessa DeCarlo, a citizen and resident of the city of Phoenix, hereby petition the city council to enact a resolution to fire and remove pensions from anyone and everyone who was involved in the conspiracy to imprison protesters from 2020 uprising, including but not limited to Chief Jerry Williams, Sergeant Doug McBride, PLE President Britt London, and any other officer who colluded to create and refile known false gang charges. In addition to that, um, Mayor Kate, when you sit in silence with full awareness that Councilman DeCiccio has been outed for abusing the power, openly exchanging text messages with his office, and conspiring to help MCAO target and falsely charge people who speak out against the very police violence that you are supposedly addressing or say to address or put out any sort of messages from your office, it is unacceptable. It is unacceptable. I am restating these demands from way back in August. We're still here in solidarity with black leadership to number one, fire Chief Williams, Sergeant McBride, and all officers who pleaded role in fabricating and approving gang charges against protesters. Number two, disband PLE, the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. Number three, pay reparations to every person politically targeted by Phoenix Police. The response of Sal DeCiccio to laugh shows exactly where he is. And he must be held accountable. He must be held accountable. The audacity to show up and carry on a city council meeting as if you aren't all totally complicit in perpetuating these atrocities and standing by and watching this play out, we demand accountability. In solidarity with black leadership, we demand accountability and, and we see that silence. We hear it very loud. Do something. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrew.
Hear me? Can you hear me, Mayor Gallego?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Gallego. I'm just changing the topic a little bit here. Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport and its billions of dollars of annual economic impact and hundreds of thousands of jobs, direct and indirect, are indispensable asset not only for the city of Phoenix, but for the entire state of Arizona. The Phoenix Department of Aviation partners with airlines and the FAA to ensure the safe operation of Sky Harbor Airport. Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport is the busiest airport in the country that can claim that no passenger or airline crew member has ever died on a scheduled airline flight in Phoenix. Unfortunately, Tempe appears determined to approve a hockey arena for the Arizona Coyotes directly under the approach to the center runway at Sky Harbor, helping the safe operation of Sky Harbor Airport. Former Tempe Mayor Hugh Holman wrote an opinion in the Phoenix Business Journal, entitled, "Phoenix Hypocrisy Looks to Want Tempe's Future Success." I think the city with the benefits of having ASU and the Sun Devils hasn't lost very much future success. The Chase Tower in downtown Phoenix is vacant, while the 2,000 employees who used to work there now work in Tempe. Tempe Town Lake is lined with an array of companies, including Carvana and State Farm. Tempe hypocrites. Tempe benefits immensely from its close proximity to Sky Harbor Airport and has no business questioning the Phoenix Department of Aviation's decisions involving aviation safety. That job is exclusively the FAA's. The Coyotes have had a very checkered record out in the city of Gwendale. Uh, meeting after meeting, hundreds of millions of dollars were spent by the city of Gwendale supporting the Coyotes. And if Tempe doesn't want to learn the lesson of what happened to Gwendale, the financial impact on the city of Gwendale, they're, they're determined to repeat history in a way that will not be beneficial for Tempe. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public portion, public comment portion of today's council meeting. We are adjourned.
I didn't get to speak.
Yeah, real quick. We got out of there real quick.
That's fine. We're not backing down. I hope they're ready. I hope they're ready. I really do. Because I'm not backing down.
Good job.
I'm done with Maricopa County's bullshit. They tried to get me with the felony six in 2018. I had a mental health episode. I had a psychotic episode. Gilbert PD put me in jail while I came off of lithium and seracrol. Nope. I'm done. I'm done with Maricopa County. If I have the money, I sue them.
No, absolutely, absolutely. I, I mean, again, folks, folks, can we just give ourselves a quick round of applause for our speakers? So good, so good. I mean, it's the kind of truth that we need to be saying in these places, right? Like, everything gets covered up by all of this weird, what is it? What do they call it? Double speak, right? We're talking about things without talking about anything and yet we're shouting as loud as we can, like focused here on what's important. Um, and so thank you, everybody who had a comment. How are we feeling, folks that, that had a chance to speak? You know, I think, I think we've come to recognize, right? Like, these places are not healthy places. They're always toxic, right? Because like, all we're trying to do is speak truth to power and they don't want to hear it. Um, and so just coming out of that, right? Just coming out of that experience, how are folks feeling? If folks want to drop in the chat, you can also come off mute. Valerie, thank you so much for starting this off. That was such a really great commentary, right? On, on where we are, which is like done, right? We are done with this.
Yeah, I will just say I'm very proud of everyone that spoke and everyone in attendance because as someone who like gets really nervous about that kind of stuff, my heart was beating all fast. It is not easy at all. So I'm very proud of everyone. I think that went very well and I think they were forced to hear what we have to say.
Thank you, Ian. Absolutely. I mean, again, right, like part of doing this is doing this as a community, right? How do we, how do we make these like insufferable spaces that we have to struggle through, right? Like, how do we make that possible? And part of that is being here together. Well, absolutely, Ian. Thank you so much for that.
I'll come off mute because I have been waiting for this day for so long. Oh, my God. Me and Sal, Sal's like, you know, we have, we have a special relationship, me and Sal. Uh, I have attacked him on Twitter since this all started. Him and I, he knows, he knows who I am. He knows who I am. And so, I have been waiting for the opportunity to dig into Sal, so I'm buzzing. I'm thrilled. I have to say, it was so incredible for the Item sixty-five, watching everybody, like, kind of adjust their approach in real time to try to throw them off and talk for longer. Like, that was so cool to watch. Like, that was so much fun. I love you guys, that was incredible.
It was so good. I mean, to your point, Marissa, and again, thank you so much for coming out and doing what you do. It was so great to hear you verbally give it to the town. It was so good. And for them to not have any kind of response, right? Because they were pretty snide. I mean, Sal was pretty snide the last few times, but again, taking down a peg, thanks to all the hard work that we put into this. Anyone else want to share a little bit about how we're feeling? One more person, one more person, how we feeling? Chelsea?
Hey, I was particularly set off by that Instagram ad I got for Kate today, that she was like, "Vote for me for this award." And I was like, "Oh, bitch, no." Like, this is not the day for that. So I had to bring that up. And because they all just, like, get very jokey about social media, like, it's a very powerful tool, and it's not there for your self-fucking promotion. So I just, it felt good to just sort of, like, rub it in her face. It's like, Mass Lib views this for good. What are you doing? Like, so, yeah, so much adrenaline.
Right? I mean, let's go ahead and bring it up. We're on live, we're on Facebook Live, folks. We're talking about Emily Bliss, right? It's the Gabrielle Giffords Rising Star Award.
That's what it is.
What the fuck is that supposed to mean? Right? Like, what does that mean if, like, the person that's on your list is Kate Gallego, who's been ignoring lab leadership, directly impacted folks for the last two years? What does that word even mean? If I was Emily Bliss, I'd be rethinking that real quick, real quick. And for all of those of you who are out there, let that be known. We need to have a much higher standard for who these electeds are and who we get to, like, rally around. And I just don't understand what this is rallying around Mayor Kate Gallego when there's, like, a mountain of need for accountability, that she just continues to skirt? Because let's remember, it's under her leadership that this culture of apathy, of blatant ignorance, right, of showing up unprepared, even though, like, we're literally spoon-seeding them everything that's going on? Like, if that's who our elected officials are, like, we can do better. And we all know that, but it seems like places like Emily Bliss and other folks don't. And so, hopefully, folks are starting to pay attention, but thank you for that, Chelsea. That was super important to say, absolutely. Well, it looks like, and again, of course, if folks have anything else they want to say, please come off mute, let it be known, let it be known. But again, you recognize that? Yeah, go for it.
Hey, I just want to say shout out to literally everyone. You all did incredible, and all of it was very inspiring. And again, shout out to all y'all. There's a heart.
Also, Mass Lib, Mass Lib love, Mass Lib love. This is how we get through, right? Is by having our community together. And one of the ways that we get through, right, is also by healing together, cleansing together. Like, we recognize these spaces are toxic. They're designed, right? The system isn't broken, it's designed this way, and it is designed to make you feel invisible, to make you feel literally crazy, right? And so, in order to continue to work through that and acknowledgement and recognition that that's the stuff we got to shake off, like, literally, we always call this, right, a city council nonsense and detox, right? Like, we've just exposed ourselves to all of this toxic energy and nonsense that we just want to clean ourselves away from as we continue into our, what is it? Our Wednesday, our hump day, right? We don't want this on our backs on our Wednesday. We got plenty of other things to do. The week is not over, right? And so, in order to leave, to move away from all that mess that is Phoenix City Council, we have a little detox, and so we invite you all to stay for this last part of the meeting, where we get to also, together, figure out how to cleanse ourselves a little bit. How do we, again, mentally, physically adjust as a community away from all of that toxicity so we could take our full, fabulous human selves into the rest of our day? And so, with that, I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Ms. Rosalyn from Mass Lib, to walk us through a little detox. Ms. Rosalyn, are you ready?
Yes, yes. I want to say that we always throw up the Mass Lib love sign at the end going out, but I say we throw it up coming in. This was a different kind of victory, even in the space today. We saw how we organized them today. We saw how everyone, I just want to tell you that I am really getting myself together from weeping. It was so brilliant today. Everyone was so articulate, on target, and I saw solidarity in condensation form. It was thick, it was deep, and it's elating to see what happens when a plan comes together. So this detox is very different. This detox is really about victory today. It's really about celebratory us, and as toxic as their behaviors are, there was a real shifting in this particular council meeting. They heard each one of you loud and clear. They felt each one of you loud and clear. And the most toxic thing is, is we know they exist, but what we know that they too know we exist and that we're coming for them. So I want to invite each one of us initially to throw up that big old Mass Lib love, throw that love up, and then we're just gonna take it and let it go and spread our wingspan. We're going to breathe in with our wingspan, and we take our head to the left and roll it and stretch, and we will take our head to the right, and it only says that we are as wide as we dream. And we take in some deep breaths, take it in, and blow it out. Let's take it in one more time, take it in, and blow it out. And then I want us to just place our hand on our, just above our navel, and I want us to feel the power of inhale and exhale. When we go in, feel it, and push out. And imagine this being your center of power as we continue to do this work, and how when we push, movement really makes things happen. So today, I hope you're going away feeling thoroughly proud of what happened in this moment and knowing that they thoroughly feel each one of you and collectively us coming after them. So give yourself a wingspan spread one more time, and then I want you to slowly embrace yourself. And I say, "Good job, team malicious thou. You kicked butt, I'm so proud of you." And that will end our detox. Back over to you, Joe.
Thank you, Ms. Rosalyn. Thank you, everyone, for being here today. Please keep mindful of our socials, we got things coming up. I know the white women group is still there, right? Now that it's white women versus Alistair Adele, you know, there's other white women in politics that need some collecting. Looking at you, Kate Gallego, and so, let's continue that work, continue that work. We will see you in the socials, we'll see you in the streets. Again, thank you for being here, everyone, and we will see you at the next one. Bye, everybody.